It was, as far as knowing that a reimbursement resolution was required, I learned that the Friday before the committee meetings. And so, that's why I came up on the agenda for the school. And then it might have been the Thursday, it was the week before. And then in talking to the comptroller's office. And then, it just didn't cross my mind to add that, had that on the agenda for the committees, for the jail study committee on committee day. And so, that's why, as we were working through the school's resolution, I thought we need to do this for the jail. Because next week, we will be starting abating the asbestos in the houses on the site, and we can reimburse ourselves if we want to for those expenses. So, we need to pass the resolution today if we want to.
Can we not? We won't be able to reimburse ourselves for the other stuff? Or the way I read it, it said it had to be in place before we expensed it.
Bond counsel advised we know that we can reimburse soft costs, okay? A hundred percent. Even like the mosley fees we paid in 2016, we can go back that far.
But the land, we can't.
We can reimburse ourselves a hundred thousand dollars for the land.
Why does the thirty-five million dollars have to be in? Nobody has agreed on that.
Well, when I filled in that blank, I knew it wouldn't please anybody.
Well, put twenty.
Let me finish, please. If you ask me a question. Is, I knew if I put ten, there would be folks that say it was too low. If I put thirty-five or forty, there would be others who would say it was too high. So, I put thirty-five thou- thirty-five million dollars in there. And with reinforced in my email that it could be amended anytime during the process. It doesn't hold you to anything as far as thirty-five million dollars. We could have put twenty-five, if you guys want to change it and put ten, I'm okay with that. This resolution is a tool in both the school situation and the jail situation. It's a tool to help manage the money. And if you want to reimburse the general fund for money that we spent out of cash, out of the general fund, if you want to reimburse it when we arrange and borrow the money for either of these projects, then you have the tool to do it. This is a tool, and that's what, that's what this is all about.
We can go back, three months from now, we could go back and do it, right? That's what you said, the soft cost and a hundred thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars of thirty-five million is not a lot. You're the only one that's ever said anything about thirty-five million. I mean, it's on offer since, from three years ago.
Any other discussion?
You're not going to answer that?
No.
Barring, barring thirty-five million, what if, what if you don't need it? Twenty million, do you pay Anderson on that thirty-five million?
He stated that if that was just a figure, it could be changed at any time in the process.
Was there a question, was, back in our notice? When you were talking about? Says that this is not a, it is not a. The verbiage does not commit an amount of financing. Clearly, this resolution should have been changed up or down if it is a binding request. Is adding this going up or down? I don't believe it is, is it? I couldn't find it. If somebody could point that out, I appreciate it. Can you do that, Mayor? Is that going up or down?
It can be amended. I've been advised by bond counsel, it can be amended.
Okay, so let's put it in there, let's go twenty million. Do we know, are we going to spend thirty-five million? Has everybody cast its stone on that? It's getting pushed around, and I'm supposed to put it personally.
Commissioner Jarvis said if you want to change that figure, when we get to voting on the item, you could amend the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it's not a motion, I can't amend the resolution.
Item, well.
I don't think.
Well, he said it could be changed at any time.
I understand that.
So, if you wanted to change it now, you could change it.
Uh.
But not right now.
Okay.
We're just trying to put it on the agenda.
All right.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, we're going to vote this off the motion. All those in favor of adding this item to the agenda, let me know the same.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five B, the approval of the river counter items. I'll make a motion to approve the river counter items.
Here we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Just the addition of this.
Quit the addition.
I agree with you just for the watch meeting.
Quit the addition.
I see.
Any other discussion? Let's vote the motion first. Mr. Neesmith?
Just may.
We need to go.
Just may.
The motion is to approve the river counter items.
Item five C, eleven yes, one no.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Stafford?
Item five C, the committee meeting start time change. I'm at the motion to change the start time of the month. We're having to kind of legislate the body, legislate the body of the committee meeting to begin at five thirty PM, beginning February two thousand and nineteen.
There are a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion.
Item five B received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
That included my report, Chairman.
We would entertain a motion to approve the consent counter. Commissioner Jarvis has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Doughty, a second. Commissioner Doughty? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, let's vote the motion, please.
Item six A received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Next item is the education committee, Chairman Gore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Summon A is Resolution nineteen oh-two, reimbursement resolution. Mayor Britton, any other discussion?
Is there any other questions about the purpose of the resolution? And what, what enables you to do, and the purpose of it?
We have a copy.
What dollar figure are you going to put on?
Sir?
About the reservation, what money figure are you going to put on?
That's twelve million on it.
We're going to decide that?
That's twelve million on it.
Dr. Perry, would you like to lay it?
Sir? Mr. Chair, members of commission, certainly a pleasure to be here, the sitting, appreciate it. I did give you a packet of information. We cannot do the PowerPoint because of maybe some conflicts with the voting bodies. But on the first page of that, you do have a proposal that we have. On the second page, it will show the existing and the new renovations that would be occurred in that. If you would turn your attention, please, to the first page, it says stages of design work. That's probably the issue that maybe was a little bit confusing to some individuals. Anytime that we go through a construction process, the first step is the design work. And there's normally about six phases associated with that. The very first phase is a pre-design work. In that, the architects and engineers just have informal conversations with the owners. What would you like to see in this? What would you like to do? When would you like to start? Those kind of things. There's really no firm or formal designs at that time. And that's the stage that we're in right now, is in the pre-design. Then there's a schematic stage. And in that, there actually gets to be some rough drawings. So, architects and engineers will actually get down, begin to scale some things out, have some rough drawings. And then we also look at the budget, based on what needs we have and the needs assessment. And you begin to start that formal process. And number three is really what most of you would consider to be the design process, and that's actually the design stage. That's when we'll actually have some detailed drawings. You will have everything scaled, just scaled. There'll be floor plans, elevations, all those kind of things. Now, this point is really when we begin to see what this is actually going to cost. Because up until that point, we just had some conversations, and there's been some ideals, exchange back and forth. But until we get to number three, you really don't have a lot of information at that time to end up making a real informed decision. All that we have at that point in time is from the proposed square footage, and you know roughly what it is to construct at a certain square footage amount. You just multiply that out, and you get a rough number. But until you get to number three, it's hard to make some informed decisions. Then number four is the construction phase, and that's when we actually take the designs and convert that into what you would consider to be bid documents. And so, that would tell contractors, we want a school this much square footage, this elevation, these number of classrooms, these number of facilities, this number of toilets, mows, those kind of things. And then, there's the bidding process, and then your architects and engineers will help you through that. Because some contractors will have a question about, well, are you specifying this kind of metal gauge or this kind of whatever it would be? So, that's when contractors would actually have an opportunity to talk with A and E people and ask them about specifics about that. Would this particular structure suffice for this? Then we go through the actual construction phase where the A and E firm would actually help us out through the entire construction process to make sure there's fidelity with the plans with what's actually being built. So, as you look at this, and turn the page to the next, next page that says finance schedule, this is what I went over with you before at our last meeting. And in that, the architectural fees are normally on percentage phases. I see they're normally somewhere between five and six percent. In the particular group that we're working with right now, the Lewis group, is at five point five percent. That is pretty typical through A through C about the percentages that they would charge for that design work. So, one through the schematics, the design and the construction documents. And then you have the bidding process and the construction monitoring. So, I went over that with you last time. If you'll turn to the next page, the rationale for this request. When we asked for specific design money, the reason why we're asking for that is we got to have access to professionals. There's no way that we can come up with this information and provide you with some of the information that you requested, some of the information that you actually need to make those decisions. That could provide us with that detailed information to move forward. It also provides us with some options. So, engineers at that point in time could say, if you change this, it would give us an opportunity to do some value engineering. Eliminate this hallway, change this around, it could save us a great deal of money, do this, do that, and some things could end up maybe improving the functionality, the dependability, the maintenance issues associated with it. And then it also allows us to perform this necessary work, some work that we've got to have. And a lot of times, what we say with this is that if you had an older vehicle, and you were having trouble with that particular car, you wouldn't necessarily make a decision to go ahead and put a new motor in or put a new transition, transmission in, until you took it to the mechanic and kind of determined what is all wrong with it, how much, how long would it last after that? And before you make some of those decisions, you would go to an expert and ask that expert, what's going to be the cost? What will it do after you fixed it, and how long can I reasonably think that it would last? So, very few of us would just go ahead and make that decision to just go ahead and do something of some major consequence without having some of that information. And that design work through those first three phases would enable us to get that work. So, the design work, the schematic work, and then the bidding documents. So, what we're requesting this evening is we're requesting funding, that reimbursement part for the design work. We're not requesting the twelve million, we're not necessarily, because we don't know that it's going to be twelve million. And that's, that's the point that we really need to emphasize. We've kind of rejected some things, but we can work on that and work with engineers, and we can give you a more detailed cost and a more accurate cost soon. So, what we're asking for this evening is monies to get us through that construction document piece so that we can truly know what this is going to cost. Now, through that process, we can see that this is too much, or that it's way below budget. We'll come back and talk to you about that. But until we get this work done, you really can't make a decision, and I can't make a decision. The school board can't make a decision. That until we get this done, really, all we're doing is talking. And so, we've got to have accurate information to make decisions. And in that time, and I've said this to this commission several times, and I will continue to do that, some of you feel like they were moving too fast, you don't have enough information. Gentlemen, I will come back every meeting, and I will provide you whatever information you need. But really and truly, I think we're going to need some of this work to be able to answer some of those questions we have. And we will have a lot of that information as we go through that second phase of that of some of the design work. If we see that it's going to be real astronomical, we'll come back to you and say, Commissioner, we've looked at this, and it seems like that this is not going to work out well. We need to reconsider. But we need the design money to go ahead and move forward, to give you that information. And also, give our school board information to give accurate and reliable cost estimates, square footage, all those kind of things. So, what we're doing this evening is that we're simply asking for that design work money on reimbursement piece. And if you'll look back to that previous page where we would have those, those cost estimates there, where you have the financial schedule. And I apologize if it's not up on the PowerPoint, I know that would be easy. Sorry about that. But the schematic designs and the construction documents. So, we are asking for about a five hundred thousand dollars to be able to do those three phases of the design work. So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's what we're requesting this evening.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to make a modification? When we have a meeting, I think that number was six sixty. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so.
It went down that amount because we were not asking the commission to go ahead and finalize those last two design pieces. We would go actually through the bidding process and then the construction process. So, that amount would be.
It really hasn't changed.
Right. If we go ahead and actually send this thing out to bid, and we see that at that point, it is something that this commission is supportive of, and it's within our financial abilities to do that. We'll know that about March is when we'll have this information. So, between now and then, we can come back to this commission and answer any questions that you have. But if we keep postponing this, we're still going to be three, four months out before we get that information. So, what we are respectfully requesting is just permission to get that necessary information before we move forward.
Sure. And then, I guess I would make the recommendation that we approve the four hundred and ninety-five, not the six sixty, and put that in the form of a motion.
All right, you have a motion, we approve four ninety-five?
Correct.
Yes, that would work.
Okay. Four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Is there a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing noted, Mr. Neesmith?
Question I want to ask. This, I heard you students talking about the cafeteria and what it's going to have, it's going to happen. How much larger is this cafeteria than the old cafeteria?
It's going to be enough that we can run three lunches. So, that's part of the design fees that we have to do and part of the design work. Because when you have so many students in there, then it has to be at a certain level for the fire marshal and evacuation pieces and all that. So, it will be larger, it will be large enough to be able to.
How much larger?
Again, that's part of the design work.
Don't know.
Yeah, right. I could give you a rough estimate, but it would be something that, at this point, we really don't know, and it could be a number that I would be guessing at. So, that's why we need that accurate information. Because it is very complicated with state regulations and fire evacuation sites and all those kind of pieces in there. That's why we need professionals to let us know. But it would be big enough to go ahead and be able to accommodate all the students and three lunches.
Isn't there a way that you could renovate your existing cafeteria to add enough that you need now?
Yes, sir. It is very possible to renovate that existing cafeteria. And actually, that was one of the first plans that we had. And as we began to look at that, and as we did some of the preliminary work on that, we saw that the cost was continuing to rise on that because we had to tear up the floor, had to install new grease traps, had to do a lot of different things. And the cost of building a new one was getting close to the same cost associated with the renovation thesis. And so, while the prices would be the same, the thing that we thought would be the most responsible and the most financially feasible option was rebuilding another part of the cafeteria. Because now, remember, the other need that we have was to increase that CTE. We met with a lot of the business industries, and we talked to some of those individuals. They're all desperate and needing trained, certified workers. And so, what we're doing as part of our responsibility to the community and to the industrial and business section is that we're increasing our career and technical education. And to do that, we've got to have some more room. So, the cost would have been roughly the same. We would build the new facility in the dining area, plus then we would have this, the old cafeteria to repurpose for career and technical education.
For what?
Career and technical education, vocational training. And right now, we're looking at culinary arts, which there's a big market now for culinary arts in terms of food preparation, food service. And then also, we're looking for that area also to help us complement our welding sections.
I was looking at this vocational facility. Well, I guess you're going to put welding in it?
We're going to do too. We're going to do welding.
What's wrong with your own welding facility?
Well, we don't really have welding facilities right now in West. We do have some welding booths set up that's part of our agricultural. But as we begin to look at that, we are going to have to install new ventilation systems in that. And that was several hundreds of thousands of dollars to go in and retrofit. Plus, we don't have the room for it. So, we would have to get rid of the ag program that we've got to be able to put the welding in that particular section. So, we were going to continue the ag part because there's still a part in our community that has that. And then, this new section would be dedicated to welding that we could end up putting in a new system that would do the ventilation and everything else. And it's almost as cheap to do that as it is to go in and retrofit.
The old welding facilities you had in West, that's not there anymore?
We do not have welding booths set up independently in West. Now, of course, there might have been some things prior to my time. But right now, we do have a couple welding booths, to my knowledge. We have some welding booths set up in our ag department, but it is not designed to teach welding because welding is such a small part of the ag program. It's not really set up to handle full-blades welding in terms of number of booths, ventilation, all those things.
So, but you know, the old welding shop, there's nothing there anymore?
No, it is not there. Mr. Kinser is a principal, and so, we do not have that welding program. I think that was probably dismantled a while back.
What's that used for now? What y'all use it for?
We've got a classroom space in there, and then also, we have a restroom room in there. And so, that, that room right now is being used for some classroom space. And if you remember back to some of the earlier ones, said that if we can convert this, the old cafeteria to the welding, then that would free up also some office area space that we want to repurpose. And in that repurposed space, we can take some of that stuff out and actually then potentially even increase our career technical space for that also.
I've had other people ask me. I know for years, that was used for kids from the east and west. I had two boys in that class. When a teacher might murder a tire, the next year, you took the welding program out and put in criminal justice in its place.
We do have criminal justice, we still have that. Now, we will do interschool classes right now, so east and west students, and that's what we are doing. And remember, I did explain this to the commission, that we don't want to duplicate these services if we can get the lunch schedules matched up. And again, this is part of comprehensive program. I think one of the things that we really want the commission to understand, sometimes you do things piecemeal, and those parts don't fit together well. We've really tried to think about this thing, get our schedule set, get those coordinated, and then we can create some of these facilities where it doesn't cost us twice to set up two programs that we could have at one school and then be able to serve that. Because I think most of you know from our industries, welding is a critical shortage of welders. And if we can do the first part, ours will be that introduction part and safety parts and those things. And then TCAT's going to pick it up and go next step, and perhaps you take it to that advanced certification. And there's even been some conversations of why they are at capacity right now, that it could be a situation that until TCAT gets theirs up and going, that we can share that facility, they come out in the evenings and use our facility. And then we could end up sharing that and having a mutually beneficial. Because of the proximity is so close. Again, we wanted to do it in West, because we already have TCAT there.
Commissioner Jarvis?
What approximately, what is the size of the cafeteria? Got to have an idea, student-wise, not one we have now, but proposed.
What we would like to be able to do is be large enough to feed, put about six hundred kids in there. We currently have a genetic population of eighteen hundred.
Yes, sir. We, right now, we're sixteen hundred, that just uses a little bit for growth. But we currently, I think the capacity, and that's cramming them in there with our serving line, can't get them fed. I think the capacity is right at four or something.
What is the, do you know what the capacity in East is? What's the students' population in East is?
So, east and west are a lot at fifteen, fifty, it's a lot at sixteen hundred. So, both.
So, there's a lot there's, or seven, fifty, I believe, if I'm right, probably seven hundred or seven hundred and fifty cafeteria. I believe it is.
Yes, sir, I think it is.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, I think it's overbuilding just a wee bit because East will never have. If it takes that many, it'd be forty-two hundred house for the students in that one academy.
And gentlemen, that's the thing that we will do in the value engineering piece. We'll look at that. And in a real situation that we know for every square foot that you put down, that's two hundred dollars. So, for each one of those square tiles that you put down, that's two hundred dollars. And as Jarvis were saying, it costs money. And so, there will get to be a point where, before we make life if you're seven hundred or six hundred kids, that's going to take something away from somewhere else. And we'll make those decisions as we go through this design process. We would rather have it over here as opposed to that in for growth. So, those would be some of the things that we do during these first three phases that we're asking for funding for. And again, if this commission wants to be and wants to have a conversation about that, we said all along, partnership, communication, we'll be open with you. So, you just invite me, and I'll be there.
Any other discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Item seven A received, nine yes, three no.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Neesmith?
Just one, one addition. All right, the motion was for.
Four no.
The amount. Now, we need to act on the resolution. On the reimbursement resolution.
Okay. In order to act on the resolution, we have to do that off the board. So, we would entertain a motion to approve the resolution at four ninety-five.
Do you have to add that, Chairman? I don't know. I think the resolution is there.
The head six sixty.
No, I'm not saying that. We're not necessarily betting on the, the amount, it's the resolution. But it's a resolution in there.
Yeah, it's on, Jarvis, this is for twelve million.
But it doesn't say anything, sort of like hours, it doesn't say anything about six sixty.
It's right here, it's for.
But it doesn't say anything, sort of like hours, it doesn't say anything about 660.
Okay.
We can entertain a motion on the resolution. We need a motion on the resolution to approve the resolution. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm Kim Horner, and second was James Stapp. Any discussion on the resolution? Start it off the board, please.
Jeff Akers?
Yes.
Chris Cutshall?
Aye.
Randy DeBord?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Vans, who is your view? Joe Jarvis?
No.
Chairman, excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but I believe the vote, bring the screen up, it should be, we'll probably go back and vote the money off the board and then vote the resolution. Because we've got it here. Excuse me, just a resolution reimbursement.
Resolution.
That's, that's, no, 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 that's, we need to go back and hand that, or whatever, and we can vote the resolution. It's going to be signed by.
I think.
Does that make sense?
We just changed the memory now.
The clerk thinks we need to go on ahead the way we're doing it.
It's gotten off the board, it's gone on the board, it's not that.
Oh.
I mean, a lot.
Scotty Long?
No.
Wayne Niesmeh?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stapp?
Yes.
Tyler Ward?
Yep.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jail Study Committee, Chairman Ball.
Okay, we're here to, anyone need to address the?
No, we need a vote. We need a vote, we need to move, we are affirm, confirm the vote to locate new jail on Allison Street.
You got to make the motion, Taylor.
Okay, you need to make the motion, Taylor.
I can make the motion, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Joe Jarvis moves that we reaffirm vote to locate new jail on Allison Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Put it on the board, please. Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion?
I made that motion. I mean, if Thomas is okay with it, that's not, okay, just leave it like it is, that's fine.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Does that accord it to where the accord comes back with it, sir?
Oh, yeah, everything's second to the sole offense.
Awesome.
Any other discussion? Start the motion, please.
Item 8, A received, ten yes, two no.
Okay, motion carries. Taylor?
You need to.
On the second, we need to move that we approve the jail technical test.
Jail technical test proposal, I think the request we approve that, how much motion do we start?
We have a motion. We have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's start the motion, please.
Item 8, B received, ten yes, two no.
Motion carries. Then we added, we added item C. We added, we added item C on the resolution to reimburse ourselves. Did you hear that?
Reimbursement resolution. I'd make the motion that we vote on the reimbursement resolution. We have a second to that.
No, you just make the motion and we'll get a second.
Okay.
He moves. This is off, oh, yeah, this is off, or, we need a second. We need a second. Okay, Chris Cutshall. Any discussion on reimbursement of the resolution? Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend that, that we, and we have first, to change that 35 million to 20 million or whatever it is, because it can always go up, that type of figure, with 35 million, we're the, we're casting stock.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the 35 million.
The 25 million or whatever.
Is there a second? Do they make it?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Or figure, he said 20, 25 million.
We're moving.
25.
25?
Yeah.
To 25, okay, from 35 to 25. Okay, any discussion? We're going to vote the amendment off the board.
Yes.
Chris Cutshall?
Aye.
Randy DeBord?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Kim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Jarvis?
Yes.
He said yes.
Yes.
Scotty Long?
Yes.
Wayne Niesmeh?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stapp?
Yes.
Tyler Ward?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, the amendment is approved, we're back to the original motion as amended. We would entertain a motion to approve.
As.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes, as amended.
I make that motion, Chairman.
Okay. Okay, the motion is that we approve the resolution.
With the 25 million.
Oh, 25 million.
Second.
Okay, it's second, who made the motion?
I do.
Okay, Doe and James Stapp, second. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Okay, let's vote it, please.
Jeff Akers?
Yes.
Chris Cutshall?
Aye.
Randy DeBord?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Jarvis?
Yes.
Scotty Long?
Yes.
Wayne Niesmeh?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stapp?
Yes.
Tyler Ward?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. That's all you have, that's all we have. Okay, Finance Committee, Chairman Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, monthly check approval, I'll put that in the form of.
Okay. Number 9A, monthly checks, I'll put that in the form of a motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 9, A received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Item 9B, resolution 1901 to apply for 2018, 2019 Walmart Foundation Grant, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 9, A received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Item 9C, budget amendments, budget amendment 1 for Fund 101, County Court Clerk for $20,000, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 9C, 1 received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Item 9C, 2, Fund 101 Corporate Security for $96.46, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 9, C, 2 received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Item 9C, 3, Fund 101 for other facilities, $612, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion.
Item 9, C, 3 received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Item 9C, number 4, funding for the 101 Sheriff's Department, that is actually a credit of 1160, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 9C, 4 received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Item 9C, number 5, Fund 131 for Highway Department, 4,903, and I like to put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Yes.
Welcome to the club.
Item 9, C, 5 received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Ball. Public Service Committee, Chairman Ball.
Thank you, Chairman. Approval of the 2019 Hamilton County Road List, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. There a second? There is a second, any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Niesmeh?
I just wondered if my road, old Proxell Road is on that new list, or we voted on it? We voted on it, it's not even on the list.
If it's not here, you'll have to call him in there.
He's right here. I'm sure it's not on the list because it hasn't been, no work's been done in 15 years.
Niesmeh, if we go file that red lift, you just have to walk up.
I want that tar.
Just being approved.
Any more discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10, B received, ten yes, one no.
Motion carries.
Board B, out of the surplus of the Sheriff's Department, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10, B received, twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. First National Committee, Chairman Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today we have item 11A, which is to give the county mayor the ability to start a pay for the effective assistant that he's going to be filling, Mr. Gibbs, leaving us above the median level. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, there a second? There a second? We have a second, any discussion? Carry on, let's vote the motion, please.
Wait, wait, nobody vote?
What is?
Wait, does yourself say that, it's a word, just a second.
First time hearing that, too.
Nice, nice girl.
Nice, throughout the path.
We almost made it.
We almost did, that one.
We checked out the board here.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, let's start it off the board, please.
Yes.
Chris Cutshall?
Aye.
Randy DeBord?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Jarvis?
No.
Scotty Long?
No.
Wayne Niesmeh?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stapp?
Yes.
Tyler Ward?
Yep.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we will entertain comments on any item.
Chairman, it's 10-03-43, J. Stephen Dru. I want to let you know that your notice on the Jail Study Committee meeting on 1/3/19 was a violation of State law that had a lady asking me about that and whether to file suit, would have elected not to, but I ask you to stop this. Really, complying with the Open Meetings Act is not that difficult. Special call meetings, which is one that's not regularly scheduled, and you don't have any jail study committee meetings regularly scheduled, unless you're a regular committee member. But those are special call meetings, and you have to say what you're going to propose or vote on, the specificity. That notice, and it's still up in the other building, said you're going to meet on 1/3/19 to take whatever action for the jail. That is not specificity by any means, and the Solid Waste Board recently was found to have violated that particular statute on special call meetings because they did not provide information to the public to let them know what would be considered at that meeting. To say whatever will be considered is not any type of specificity as required under the act. So, get with your attorney, he was defending, or he was defending the Solid Waste Board, he knows what was found, he knows the law, but somehow, we end up with these notices that are improper, just like those public notice signs. It's going to come back up, folks, I don't know why you, I really just don't understand why you ignore what's in front of you. But that's your choice, thank you.
I agree. Is there someone on that?
Anyone else? We have several announcements. First of all, the February committee meetings will meet on Monday, February 11, 5:30 here in the large courtroom, at 5:30. February County Commission Meeting, Thursday, February 21st at 5:00 p.m. here in the large courtroom. We have a jail study committee meeting Wednesday, February 13th at 4:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m., not 5, 4:00 p.m. at the courthouse, large courtroom. That enables those people who have prayer readings to leave and get to church on time. The Planning Committee Workshop will meet on February 5th at 3:30 in the small courtroom. And then the mayor has arranged a tour of the Monroe County Jail facility on February 7th, and we will leave here at 7:30 in the morning, but there'll be additional information shared with you later on. If you plan to go, you need to let the mayor know, at February 7th at 7:30 in the morning. That's all I have, if any of you have anything, not be standing there.